...rooftop terrace and a mega theater.
What I love about it is Renzo has managed to create a new icon for the city. So I feel like the building will float. It's an amazing public gathering space.
The museum will share the block with LAC County Museum of Arts and the La Brea Tar Pits, which will soon turn this into a cultural mecca and arts destination.
There's still 89 million to raise to reach a $388 million goal, but this Hollywood masterpiece already seems like a done deal. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The museum is set to open in 2019. And as the Academy Museum begins to take shape, major tax incentives are helping bring production back to LA. But it isn't just about production crews losing work. In fact, it's hit other areas in the entertainment industry as well. Rasha Goel has more on how LA film and TV musicians are trying to keep the score in California.
Ever think about how crucial music is to film and television? Well, so are those jobs. And with the issue of runaway scoring, these musicians and local supporters are out at LA City Hall with a Keeping the Score in California concert. The event is to help raise awareness on a new bill, AB 1300.
It's a music scoring tax credit bill, and the goal is to try and bring jobs back to California, jobs that we've lost to other places.
Those places include Britain, Australia, and New York. The new bill calls for a 30% credit to offset scoring expenses for movies shot outside of North America, those movies which employ 35 or more musicians and complete at least 75% of the scoring in California.
We have an opportunity to not only employ those musicians who are here today, but for every musician that is here today, there are 1,000 in the pool of brilliant, brilliant talent that are waiting to work.
And certainly those 800,000 workers, those 300 unions are going to be standing shoulder to shoulder with each and every one of you until we get what you came for. And that's a good, solid, middle-class job that you can support your families on.
According to local musicians, movies provide a more stable source of income than television.
We want them to have good jobs, make a good living, and be able to just contribute as they do originally to all the -- everything that happens in LA makes it such a great place to live.
AB 1300 is expected to be up for vote next year. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
It's a two-day festival that keeps people on their toes, and it keeps growing. Anna Marcos brings us more on the annual Latin Jazz and Music Festival, put on by Councilmember Gil Sadio and the Department of Cultural Affairs.
A little jazzy salsa, just the ticket to get everyone up and on the dance floor. Well, almost everyone. Jazz and salsa lovers got down at the Fourth Annual Latin Jazz Music Festival in Council District One.
They had some great rock and roll stuff with Latin feel, and that was pretty enjoyable. And all the women got out and they danced because the guys were a little backward about going on the floor, but it was a ball.
The party hosted by Councilmember Gil Sadio's office and the city. And there were some big headliners here, artists like Los Coyotes and Joe Button.
We're very excited. We have several Grammy winners. Bring this music to the people, preserve a unique American art form, and free to the public.
For free, you can't beat it. I paid to see these people.
Maybe I'll discover some new artists today, too, and I'll go see them again.
Since the beginning, the festival has been a huge success.
From the first year, we had under 1,000 people show up, which in the last couple of years has doubled. So today, we're looking at about 3,000 people.
And it's the music that seems to keep bringing the people back. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
A total of 10 bands played over the two-day festival. An artist's vision is brought back to life as she shares LA's history through her artwork. But it hasn't been the easiest journey getting her work displayed in the City of Angels. Rasha Goel has more.
After 27 years, this landmark mural makes its way back to Union Station. "LA History: A Mexican Perspective," created by artist Barbara Carrasco, is on display at Union Station, one of the few places in the city large enough to accommodate the 80-foot mural.
She helped to depict here behind us what Los Angeles and what it meant for her to see through that lens of suffering, oppression, and glory.
This is historical mural. Every single thing in this mural is historically accurate.
The mural, created in 1981, contains 51 scenes depicting a chronological history of LA, emphasizing the experiences of marginalized groups. It captures the city's original native inhabitants through the 20th century, including her younger sister's image.
I'm really proud of my sister for doing this. It was a big struggle. She's very talented, and I just helped her a little bit. I posed for it.
This mural was last displayed here in 1990 and was censored for depicting the city's troubling history. The artist says it's been in storage, and she's been trying to bring it back into the public view since then.
For example, they said the Japanese don't want to be reminded of such a negative part of their history, a dark chapter. And I said, "Well, none of you are Japanese. Let's go ask them."
The mural, which was created for the Los Angeles bicentennial at the time, was then not shown and given a temporary display at the 1990 Los Angeles Festival. Officials feel it's especially relevant now, just as it was back then.
As we're going through all this strife in our country today, I think a lot of us here know that there's a lot of hurt, but there's also a lot of healing, and there's a lot of history.
From the incarceration of Japanese-Americans during World War II to the Zootsuit riots, all is shown through the unfolding of the woman's strands of hair.
This mural has survived attempts to erase the histories of people of color in Los Angeles, and it is still here today as a testament to those stories and the fact that they matter.
I can't even talk right now. I'm just excited. I'm very happy with all my friends and family being here.
Carrasco says it took her eight months to complete the mural, but it's been quite the journey getting it to where it is now. But for now, she is overjoyed to finally be able to share this perspective with the world. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The mural will be on display at Union Station until October 22nd, and then at La Plaza until February 28th of 2018. Hopes are to find a permanent home for it. Mayor Eric Garcetti brings together community service providers to address our homeless crisis. A pilot program helps support local manufacturers, and the city of LA wants your input to help improve your neighborhood. All these stories in City B. To help guide neighborhood-based efforts to end homelessness, Mayor Eric Garcetti convened more than 300 neighborhood council members, homelessness liaisons, business leaders, and city commissioners to connect them with service providers on the front line of the crisis. As part of the Engage LA event hosted at Getty House, representatives of organizations including Lavame, Chrisless, Downtown Women's Center, and others answered questions on how to support local efforts to guide Angelenos who are homeless to services and housing, transform empty lots into safe parking sites, and build temporary modular shelters.
Make the pledge with me that every day we will do something to make sure that we create more of those good news stories of people coming home, of coming back, of finding each other, of looking out for one another, until we no longer have a single Angelino who is unhoused in Los Angeles.
Mayor Eric Garcetti also launched LA Original, a pilot program of the Mayor's Fund of Los Angeles in partnership with the Mayor's Office of Economic Development to spotlight and support LA's creative economy and local manufacturers. LA Original includes a logo, promotional campaign, and line of products from local makers. The program's proceeds will support creative entrepreneurs across the city. LA Original has engaged over 20 companies and retailers that are making new creations for the LA Original line or merging existing products with the brand. The city of Los Angeles is asking for your help. By taking a five-minute online survey, you can help the city decide where to spend millions of dollars to improve your neighborhood and community. These funds can be used to combat the most pressing issues in your community, like homelessness, the lack of decent parks, or affordable housing. Responses can be submitted until November 22nd. To take the survey, go to research.net/r/los angeles city con plan 2017. More fun than a barrel of monkeys are a pair of newborn primates, the first baby mandrills to be born at the LA Zoo in decades. Gil Reyes has more from the zoo. Gil?
Yana Kay, everybody at home, it's a very special day at your Los Angeles Zoo with the arrival of the first mandrills in over 40 years. Here are the proud mamas Clementine and Juliet with their newborns. Mandrills, by the way, are the largest of the monkey species. They're also among the most colorful.
Yes, we are very happy and excited to announce that we have two new mandrill babies. We have a little boy and a little girl, and this is a relatively new family.
L'Oreal Dunn from the LA Zoo says the new moms arrived from France just last year. They mated with the zoo's only male mandrill, Jabari, to produce the babies.
You will see the males have blue and red on their face. They're just super colorful, and that is to attract the ladies and say that I'm this beautiful, strong guy. I'm going to make, you know, good babies. They're going to be strong, and they're going to be healthy.
Mandrills come to us from the rainforests of Western Africa. Because they have tails, they're monkeys, not apes, and are the largest of monkeys at that, weighing around 80 pounds as adults.
Another really cool thing, you'll see them grab stuff and shove it all in their mouth, but they're not actually eating at all. They have what's called cheek pouches. So right on these sides, they can stuff all kinds of food in there. Then they'll go somewhere, hang out, sit, and then slowly start eating everything.
Mandrills are now endangered because of poaching and habitat loss. Eventually, zoo officials hope to breed more.
That's our goal, you know, to save this beautiful planet, not the amazing species. So come see these beautiful babies, because they're amazing.
From your Los Angeles Zoo, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
To donate to the zoo's conservation causes and for more on zoo hours, exhibits, and special events, just visit lazoo.org. Let's show your community spirit by taking part in a peace march, move to the beat of some Latin music during a family fun weekend event, and enjoy the fast-paced action of Red Bull Global Rallycross. All this and this week's things to do. Join community residents, activists, and Office of Councilmember Gil Sadio in a March for Peace in Lincoln Heights. The march will be followed by a resource fair and free food. It starts on Saturday, October 14th at 9:00 AM at the Boys and Girls Club, located at 2635 Pasadena Avenue. Bring the family and celebrate the exhibit Cuba is with a Family Fun Weekend. Join the fun for a weekend of Cuban dance, group art activities, storytime hosted by books and cookies, face painting by rainbow painted smiles, and interactive Latin musical and dance performances. It all takes place Saturday, October 14th from 11:00 to 3:00 PM at Annenberg Space for Photography's Skylight Studios, located at 10050 Constellation Boulevard. For some heart-pumping racing action, head out to the Red Bull Global Rallycross at the Port of LA. Join other racing fans for all-day racing action, exhibitor booths, awesome giveaways, and the stars and cars of Red Bull Global Rallycross. The event takes place at Port of Los Angeles at 3011 Minor Street. For details, visit redbullglobalrallycross.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kit, make a plan, be informed today.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Today is Tuesday, October 10th. I want to welcome you to City Hall. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call a roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonn, Busken, Sadio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Karresk, Correia, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. 12 members present in the quorum. Mr. President?
Okay, first order of business?
Today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Moves, Englanders. Oh, my mistake. Would all please rise? In fact, let's start off with Mr. O'Farrell. Could you lead us in the flag salute?
Everyone, please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. O'Farrell. Alan, we had you in the chair, and I thought it was Wednesday, okay?
Sorry.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, O'Farrell moves, Englander seconds. Next?
Mr. President, that would bring us to commendatory resolutions for approval.
Sadio moves, Karret seconds. That brings us where? Oh, we have a runaway child.
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that items 1B, 1D, 1F, 1G, 1H, 1I, and 1M be continued to November 28th, sir.
Okay, without objection, so ordered. Continue.
Mr. President, that brings us to items 1 and 2. They're items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, sir, cards on both.
Then continue.
Items 3 through 13 are items which public hearings have been held.
Specials members, let's then prepare to vote on these. Pardon, Mr. Clerk?
Pardon me, sir. I've been informed by a member that an amending motion for item 13 is forthcoming and should be held on the desk.
So let's hold that item and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, items 14 through 27 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, they're now before this body. You have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on 14, 15, 16, 17, and 24 through 27.
Let's hold those items, vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
13 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to items called special or general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, let's start off with the multi-public comment. I would like Mr. Previn. Could I pull up Mr. Previn on the screen? Mr. Previn, 1E, M, O, P, item 2, 14, 25, 26, 27. Mr. Previn, 1E, M, O, P, item 2, 14, 25, 26, 27, and in general public comment.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. It's Eric Previn from the 2nd District, Studio City. And I'll start with the item 25 and 26, which are some very generous donations from Kaiser is giving us $200,000, and I believe Dignity Health California Hospital Medical Center is also coughing up $165,000, if I've got it right, for the advanced provider program for the EMS. Now, I remember during budget hearings that there was some concern about funding some of these things, and I think Councilmember Englander bravely stepped up and said, "Look, I'll cover it right out of my pocket," which caused Corrigan to pop a little eyebrow upward. But everyone went, you know, "What's going on?" And I think Corretz knows that there's a benefit to sticking these fire department processes with a private operator. I think it benefits the private operator, which is why they're very happy to help. I just, you know, and I, nobody's questioning that we want quality EMS. I just, when somebody offers you something as a contribution donation because they're such great helpers, I always wonder what's the catch. So that's where I'm scanning there. I can't see anything, you know, who could argue with firefighter paramedics? Obviously, everybody knows we need that. Although, everybody knows that it's an unaffordable nightmare when you have to deal with that in life. So I just, I just hope that there's some measure of control there. On the item that you could describe as 20, sorry, is it 11? Yeah, I got a little confused here on my own notation. Yeah, item 11, which is...
Oh, it's item 14. Mr. Previn, 14?
14 is, that's right, okay. Pardon me. That's Amna Kazie, who is being appointed by the mayor to the Human Relations Commission. I recognized her name because she was one of the big endorses of the mayor during his campaign, because I think she was very pleased that the mayor is always raising his voice for immigrants and for Muslims, and I think many Angelenos are, myself included. So I guess she'll do a good job on that one. #TeamGarcetti would be the link if you want to go see that. Then, there's some items which I'm focused on, but I know you don't want me to talk about, so I'm gonna pretend that I'm not talking about them, like item number 9, which is the...
Mr. Previn, let's go to Mr. Previn's general public comment.
I'm just trying to highlight the absurdity of not being able to speak on big grants being used for big initiatives like the High Injury Network, which I know you know is getting a lot of attention and concern. And I think in item 9, they were looking very closely, you know, in those, some of those places where they're looking to put some of this money. This is just $187,000 that's from a private group called the National Safety Council. They're mostly motorist-related folks. I scanned, and I couldn't see too much of the other groups, but some of the typical ones, MAD, Mothers Against Drug Driving, and so on and so forth. But those high priority carters have become a big issue in Los Angeles. Today, at the County of Los Angeles, they settled a bicycle death. It was terrible, but they settled it for $800,000. Guy was killed. He was riding a bike in a place where you shouldn't. But in Los Angeles City, we have just spent in the last year almost 20-plus million dollars on settling bicycle claims, whereas in the previous 10 years, we only spent $6 million on hundreds of cases. So that is why the attention has gone upward as to what has changed.
Mr. Previn, thank you very much. Okay, now, I'm gonna call for Mr. Walsh and then Ms. Pierman. Mr. City Attorney, since we've already begun the multi-public comment, I've called the people who have put in cards. I'm closing it, okay? So, Mr. Walsh, you have, you have items 1A, B, C, 2, 14, 15, 16, 17, 23, 24, and 25. Go right ahead.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential. 1A, these are liens. You do a good job. "I'm not one of those white guys who say, 'You do a terrible job on everything. We need more white people on this.'" That's not me. When you do a good job, I get down on my knees and suck your cock. HollywoodHighlands.org, all of you, all 15 of you. And number 1A, this is, now, let's go to number 2. And number 2 is the appropriations limit. This is how much money they can spend. And I'll bet my left testicle that they won't spend one second talking about this. And what is it? It's just a, it's a $5,415,819, $819,000. And that is the amount of money they can spend without raising the limit. And they will spend every dime of it. And most of it, they're not gonna talk about it. They're just gonna push all of these $5 billion through. They don't give a syphilitic rat's ass what they're doing, except spend, spend, spend. Everything they're spending, and then on the future, we have tax- exempt loans, we have fire commissioners. Hey, there was a big fire here on September 8th. The alarm rang. You got your white and black and brown asses out of here, and you...
Are you in your general public comment, Mr. Walsh, now? Is that what you're doing?
David Zennhiser, that piece of scumbag, didn't, he's the LA Times reporter who desires to suck the mayor's cock and will do anything he can to suck the mayor's cock, including, we had a big fire here, the fire sprinkler broke, and, hey, this is serious business. I'm saying that the fire sprinkler is broke and that the LA FD came here. Now, if that's a lie, destroy my credibility, cocksuckers, especially this city attorney with his little cocksucking smile on his face. I'm telling you, is it true? Is it true that what happened was that the fire sprinkler system burst? The whole system is a fire trap. They don't give a syphilitic rat's ass what's happening here. That's why hardly anyone shows up here, because at any time, it could ring and we could have another big fire, bursting of the fire sprinkler system.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Ms. Pierman, give me Donna, Ms. Pierman's, Mr. Corrigan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a point of order, I'd like to ask the city attorney to consider and consult with the council president as to whether or not Mr. Walsh's preferences about fellatio or those of others are relevant to the jurisdiction of this city council, because his repeated references to those sorts of acts seem to me to be inherently disruptive of the council. And I'd like the city attorney to consider whether or not the statements that he just made have any relevance to anything within the jurisdiction of this council.
Come on, Ms. Pierman. Donna Pierman, thank you, Mr. Corrigan. You have 1A, 2, 26, 27 in your public comment. Come on. Look, just, 1A, 2, 26, 27.
All right, perfect. Okay, on 1, we have, again, our liens. And unlike Walsh, I don't believe that you can care less about these people. You just want to make it hard by putting liens. And of course, if it's anything big and a huge, big businesses, they can do whatever they want. City council members, they can go do whatever wrongs they want, and they go after these small people with these. Still, I don't know, they'll probably be all cut down sooner or later, but all the way to R, that's way too much. Okay, then we got on number 2, with the $5 billion, $5,415,819,599, but you still can't find a way to do video conferencing and ban eyes. And you also can't make it at least every month in van eyes.
Get on the topic, Ms. Pierman.
Yeah, that's $5 billion, and you're not using it to do that. And, okay, and number 24, that's, let's, Inyo, let's see. Well, I'm worried about whether the fire department will do things correctly, so I'm hoping that with, I don't know why we're doing, worrying about Inyo and mono counties during January and February, why we're going way out of the area and not taking care of ourselves. And I'm not sure about the DWP, because the DWP is usually for themselves. So, you know, I'm not sure that I just want to pull in the ballpark of the DWP, because I don't think that a lot of it with the big corporate, not the little smaller people, but the big people up in top, they don't think they care about the public. They like to waste money. And Kaiser Permanente, yes, I like to talk about Kaiser Permanente. Kaiser Permanente is not for the people that, I've seen countless numbers of people that, I've seen people that have been killed because of neglect by Kaiser Permanente. And also, it makes it very difficult for the people on Medi-Cal to get on Kaiser Permanente. My boyfriend was pulled back for that. So I'm not sure, I'm hoping that the person who gives this great big thing to Kaiser Permanente, that they will, Kaiser Permanente will do it in the correct manner and won't just put the people who are poor or people who are disabled and treat them differently like they usually do. So we're almost down to this one thing. So I just don't see any of these people using their money correctly. So that's why I'm concerned that they use it correctly. And in a second, I'll be on to public comment. Okay.
Give her one minute.
The shooter did it for a cause, to get the guns, to get the guns, he wanted, to see, to put them banned. He wanted to, he wanted to show people how easy it was to get guns, so they put the gun issue back on the burner. Gun control laws are honoring the shooter. We're willing to give up our lives, liberty, and the Second Amendment that's needed for the, that's needed for the living, not just the 58 people, God rest their souls. In Germany, they took away the guns first before they took away the Jews. The Germans didn't, the Germans didn't do it all at once. They did a little at a time, just like our gun laws are little-ing a little at a time to complete gun ban. Diane Feinstein has a lot of security, no laws to her, guns are not negotiable. We will not get rid of our guns, Diane Feinstein. We will not get rid of our guns, Maxine Waters. We will not get rid of our guns, city council, so don't even think about it.
Thank you. Okay, let's vote on items 15, 16, 17, 24, 25, 26, and 27. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, and also, let's take up item 1.
And Mr. President, for item 1, there has been a request from the Department of Building and Safety to receive and file items 1A, 1C, 1E, 1J, 1K, 1L, 1N, 1O, 1P, 1Q, and 1R inasmuch as the liens have been paid in full.
Okay. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That concludes item 1, sir.
Okay, let me, could you put up the general public comment? Is this it here? Okay, Merced Sanchez, Umberto Yali, Abraham Zavala, please come forward. Please, please, please.
Buenos dias, señores concejales. Mi nombre es Umberto Yali.
Good afternoon. My name is Umberto Yali.
Vendo en la Avenida Main y la 47 Street.
I vend on 47 and Main Street.
La razón que me encuentro aquí es por un agradecimiento a los señores concejales.
The reason I'm here today is to, you know, show a token appreciation for the work you've been doing.
Por la discriminación de los tickets y el apoyo que nos están brindando, lo cual les agradezco mucho.
For beginning and initiating the idea of decriminalizing tickets for vendors.
Y ojalá que continúen apoyándonos porque es una necesidad para los vendedores.
And we hope to continue to have your support as we move forward as street vendors.
El problema que tenemos es en la venta de los parques, para que se descriminalice la venta ambulatoria en los parques.
We hope that you continue the decriminalization into park vending.
Y esperemos que nos apoyen y la verdad que lo están haciendo muy bien y los felicito, señores.
We hope that you continue to support us, and you guys are doing a great job, and thank you so much for the work you're doing.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your help, support. And can we have Merced go first, before Abraham? That's me.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Buenos dias, señores concejales. Quiero presentarme ante ustedes. Mi nombre es Merced Sanchez, y soy vendedor ambulante del distrito de la Piñata.
Good afternoon. My name is Merced Sanchez. I am a street vendor in the Piñata district.
Quiero agradecer el trabajo que han realizado algunos concejales en apoyarnos discriminando el ticket 8073.
I like to begin by thanking council members who have begun to initiate work on decriminalizing ticket 80, I'm sorry, municipal code 8073.
Ya que es con este ticket estamos más expuestos a los problemas migratorios que tenemos hoy en día. Por eso agradezco su trabajo.
Municipal code 8073 oftentimes gives folks with undocumented status problems with their proceedings for immigration. So we really thank you for doing this work and pushing this forward.
También pedimos que sigan haciendo su trabajo con respecto a los parques, porque al seguir estos tickets ahí es un problema muy grande para nosotros que podemos separar a las familias.
And we hope that you continue this work with park vending. As you know, park vending, that code also has an infraction, which could affect families. It could separate families given the current immigration context.
Agradezco también pedirles nuevamente que sigan, que no se olviden de nuestra legalización de la venta ambulante. Seguimos luchando, estamos comprometidos con ustedes a hacer un trabajo honesto y cumplir con todo lo que ustedes dispongan.
And we hope to continue to work with you in furthering legalization, the permit as well. We are committed to this process and working with all sides in order to get our permit.
Thank you. Now you, sir.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Abraham Zavala. I am an organizer with East L.A. Community Corporation. East L.A. Community Corporation does work with the L.A. Street Vendor Campaign, as many of you know. We just wanted to stop by today and thank you, right? A lot of folks have really taken this serious issue and taken it seriously. They've researched the policy, and we appreciate that. We just want to make sure that the door's open. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to L.A. Street Vendor Campaign. We're willing to work with all council members on having this initiative go forward in your communities. The Street Vendor Campaign and the vendors who are involved in this campaign are more than willing to organize and work and, you know, have educational efforts, you know, and also create committees among neighbors and businesses, small businesses in particular, to create a vibrant community where they vend. And of course, you know, not all street vendors are in the campaign, clearly, but it's an ongoing effort, and we really hope that we continue to work together in finding solutions for our communities. After all, L.A. is a vibrant food culture, and street vendors see themselves as part of it, as micro entrepreneurs in that economy. So thank you so much for your time, and we hope that you continue to do good work in decriminalizing street vending. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Father Clark, Father Clark, are you here? Please come down, sir. Hold on one second, Father. Members, let's vote on item 2. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, Father. Floor is yours.
Good morning. Honorable council members, thank you. Just want to speak briefly, a small note of homelessness that I ask that you favorably consider continuing the financial support to have a winter shelter at All Saints Episcopal Church in Highland Park. As you well know, there's over 26,000 homeless, that we're only providing between 35 and 50, depending upon how bad the rain and the cold is outside. That it's a Band-Aid on road rash. That it's a Band-Aid on road rash, that, but it is at least 35 to 50 people can find a safe, warm place that during the wintertime. You've supported us for the past two years, that I have been encouraging my fellow brother and sister clergy to do the same thing we're doing, that but we can do good things with your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Father, stay there for one second. Okay, that closes general public comment. You also have a card on item 13. Would you like to speak on, continue to speak on that?
Just the same thing that I just said. If I preach a sermon once, that should do it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's vote on, or are there, are there any other cards on 13? Is it Suzanne Smith? Please come forward. Sakia Hampton, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Suzanne Smith. I represent the Eagle Rock Neighborhood Council. I'm also a volunteer with Recycled Resources, which has been working with All Saints to have a shelter in Highland Park for the past several years, and we really wanna urge you to continue the funding of that. It's been a tremendous gift, not just for people experiencing homelessness, but for the community at large. I just wanted to show you a picture that I actually bought on my way here this morning from a man sitting on the sidewalk around the corner. And it's really pretty incredible for him to just be sitting there. So I wanna remind you that these are people, they have dreams, they have gifts, and the fact that they have no homes shouldn't make a difference in how we treat them. Thank you.
Thank you. So Sakia Hampton, Mr. Previn?
Thank you, sir. Just the general public comment?
No, this is on, we reopen 13, and you had a card on it.
Right. Well, thank you. I went over to the board and could not see the amendment. So that's a problem, but I know that we have been making efforts to open the winter shelter programs and to keep them open.
Mr. Previn, hold on one second. We've held your time. Just so that you know, the amending motion is to provide funding for All Saints Church for the homeless shelter, as actually, in accordance with what the father suggested. And recommendation three and four have been omitted. Sorry, is it, you're not hearing it? So the funding will be provided for All Saints Episcopal Church, much in line with what the father just suggested, and recommendation three and four are being omitted. That, that's what the, the motion says. So you can put your comments accordingly.
So?
Okay, well, thank you. The navigation centers is something that people have been looking very closely at, because whereas we do need and want winter shelters to remain open, what, at the Armory, for example, in Silmar, one of the proposals was to tur-, because the navigation centers are where we have more success. But I do think that keeping them open during the day is a sensitive, appropriate thing to do, because the idea that people have to leave right away in the morning puts them in a, you know, suddenly the shelter is withdrawn. So, we, the All Saints group has been doing this for a while. If I'm not mistaken, that's in Eagle Rock, but I may have it wrong. Anyway, in any case, this is a small step in the right direction, but let's take more robust steps in the right direction, and let's make the audio recordings for the HHH meetings up in the CAO's office available. We've asked the mayor repeatedly, and we know that Mitch O'Farrell agrees. And if he doesn't agree, he could say so in writing, and also return the Masuborsky LLC contributions at his earliest convenience, but preferably today. Thank you.
Thank you. So Hampton, okay, not here. Let's then...
And, Mr. President, for clarification, amending motion 13A has now been distributed and posted, and is before council for consideration.
Okay, so let's vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Now, let's bring forward item 14. Again, Sakia Hampton. Sakia Hampton on item 14. Not here. Let's vote. Let's open the roll on item 14. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
My understanding, there's been a request that we vote on reconsideration for item seven. If you, we could please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, it's to be continued for two weeks, means this item will be continued to, till October 24th.
Yes, sir.
What's before this body now?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted, they are referred.
The desk is clear.
Thank you. Announcements, members, announcements. If I could get all in the council chambers to please rise. All in the council chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. Emilio, please rise. Good to see you. I'm, I'm looking to my left side. That would be Mr. Harris Dawson's side, Mr. Bloomingfield's side. I don't see any. I'm now looking to my right side. I don't see any on my right side. Members, this meeting is adjourned.
S.A. Recycling handles 2.5 million gross ton recycled product, and 60% of that goes through Port of Los Angeles. Our goal is zero waste. Anything you can imagine, you can recycle. When the material comes here, some of the material goes to the pile, ready to ship, and the other material, like cars, appliances, needs to go to our mega shredder, which is 9,000 horsepower. My story pretty much tells about our corporate culture, creating equal opportunity for everyone. I'm from Turkey. I'm born and raised in Istanbul. I started working at S.A. Recycling as a driver for our president and CEO, George Adams, which literally, the job changed my life. One year after finishing the manager and training program, they gave me a brand-new facility, and I started taking over more struggling locations. I oversee 13 locations, from Oksnak all the way to Carson. We have 400 employees in Los Angeles area, including the port region. Hundreds of Los Angeles residents use recycling as their main source of income.